Did you already call it to order?
I did.
Okay. J.C. Infel.
President.
Rudy Davis.
President.
Angela Berry.
Here.
Brenda Boncera.
Here.
Wanda Schwer.
Here.
And Laura Matalouni.
Here.
The approval of the agenda. We can move right on like we did the last time. It's safer with your mask up when you talk down. Just make sure you talk loud. So our meeting today, in terms of chapter 10.
The approval of the agenda. The items that came in, like La Darty and Moore and those others, can we just approve adding them to this meeting? Or do you want to do them in another meeting?
Never heard of saying shit.
The additional items that came in after this agenda was set, which are the entry from Susan Moore and from Dan Darty. Do you want to add these notes to discussion of this meeting? Or you want to put them in a later meeting?
We can mail them in as we go along. They refer to exactly what we covered.
Okay.
Last time. Where is the list of the agenda? Is this it? Okay. Do you have the minutes? I never got a copy of the minutes.
I approve that we approved the minutes.
Second?
Like them.
All those in favor?
I'm proud of them.
And that was the minutes?
Yes.
And who moved and seconded the agenda?
Rudy, second.
The agenda? I didn't hear that part. Okay, so Wanda and Rudy for the agenda? Thank you.
We assign discussion of the city assigned. So we can start with, as we did the last time. Rudy, we can jump right on to your. Let's see, and you're going to go first.
In discussion of Ken?
Yes.
Okay.
With your discussion with a deputy. Which I think everybody got a copy of, right?
Yes.
Was there any comments you had, Rudy?
I wanted to ask Lynn about this situation with the rubber curb ramps. And whether he agreed that this was an issue. And how about you, Laura? What do you think of these curb ramps and eliminating those? And Dan Darty's? Did you get a copy of Dan Darty's?
Yes, I did. Lynn is well versed in that, so I know he'll be coming. So you might want to just say that.
Right, we'll just cross over that. This 12 hours during the week, is that city instructed?
I'm sorry?
Is the 12 hours a week that he spends like code enforcement set by the city?
It fluctuates between 12 to 14 to 16. It can fluctuate anywhere from 12 to 14 depending on what.
So those hours are set by the city budgetarily speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
That seems to be sufficient.
Sorry?
Is insufficient in your regard?
No.
It's not efficient?
No.
Is it insufficient in the number of hours to do the job? Or insufficient in how the job is done?
It's really not my responsibility.
Okay.
I think you should have the discussion.
Okay. All right. Then let's skip over that and then go. Do you want to go one, two, one?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Laura, did you say last time that you used to be the inspector? Did it take you more than 12 hours?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
You were full panel, right?
Yes, but in addition to code enforcement, I was doing other duties. So I wasn't devoting 40 hours totally to code enforcement. But I was devoting much more time, 12 hours.
So I have a question. When a fraction comes in and someone calls, does it wait until Dan's scheduled? Or can anybody?
Depending on the severity of the fraction. If it can wait, then we defer to when Dan comes in. If it's something that needs to be readily addressed, then either Lynn will go out or it will send me out. So depending on the item, certainly we're not going to let something that's an issue wait until Danny gets back. But if it's just a grass or something like that, then we would wait until Danny gets back. Safety issue, we never do that to them.
Right.
And Danny's usually set on certain dates. It used to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, sometimes on the weekend. That deviates with the schedule. But an answer to the question, when I was originally hired full-time, that did not take full-time duty, so I had other duties. But it was definitely more than 12 to 14 hours a week.
I can speak to that real quickly. When I was on council, there was a survey done of the residents. And the number one issue was code enforcement. Up until that point, we had had only part-time code enforcement. At first, we had shared a code enforcement officer with Indian wrong speech. For whatever reason, he resigned, so we hired somebody else who worked part-time. And that was still insufficient. So then the city hired Laura to be a full-time, basically a full-time code enforcement. Primarily because that was the number one issue of the residents.
And it changed to Officer Darty at whose request?
Because we had to cut staff.
Counsel, this current council made that change?
Pretty much, after I left.
Okay.
Outsource the work.
So Lynn's here and?
Sorry, I'm late.
No problem. I had the question. We noted that Officer Darty is working 12 to 14 hours a week. And yet there still seems to be thoughts that code enforcement is not sufficient. And my question to Laura, who she deferred to you, was is that because there's a lack of hours or a lack of money?
No. I think I mentioned this at the last week's meeting. The issue I have with it really is, he doesn't. He's a police officer. That's the bottom line. And I've spoken to his supervisors. And Laura and I both spoke to his supervisors. And they'll tell you the same thing. He's a police officer first, that's what he knows. And he struggles with realizing that from a. You've got to know a little bit about building permits. You've got to know a little bit about, you know, look at our codes. And that's where he struggles. Because he'll drive down the street. This is probably an example. And, you know, I just talked to him about this. And I was told, well, you know, I didn't know if it was a trash day. I said, Danny, you know when the trash days are. It's Monday and Thursday. You know when it's recycling day, it's Wednesday. And this looks like a mixture. It is. I don't know, because I haven't, I don't even know what the address is. But I presume it's on that line. Okay. So my, you know, as I just said to him just a couple minutes ago. He said, well, you know, I get confused with this. I said, you know what the days are. It's always something, you know? It's kind of like, if you go to a house, we've got two houses being built on 15th Street. Okay? Right across the street from it, there was a. They're doing some significant work to this house. Okay? Well, if you have complaints on 15th Street, in my mind, if I saw it, you might want to go up and check to see if this work is a permit. You know, just to ask someone. Didn't see it until I told him about it. So that's stuff that I have concerns about. I'm considering, because it's really in my purview, I think that I can adjust his hours a little bit. I'm going to put Laura back on the street earlier. Laura, I've talked about it. Because we're missing stuff. And part of it is because he doesn't. He's a police officer, that's the bottom line. He's not a code enforcement officer.
Well, how long has he been doing this?
Over a year.
Oh, over a year.
Yeah, so it is a new. But, and we've had these conversations multiple times. And, you know, I've told his bosses. I mean, I've had two meetings with his bosses. Another one just recently, because we get into discussions about. I had a complaint from a resident that he was talking to her. Healthy number of words. About her code violations. He's supposed to do that. So, but there are some benefits to him. You know, he can run people down to his, you know, his computer and find stuff that it's hard for us to find. But I think what we're going to try to do is focus him more on specific projects. Like we use rental registration example in the condos. You know, we're going to focus him to start checking. And then eventually, you know, I've talked to some of the council members about it. They're probably don't care one way or the other. And then other council members think, you know, he's got to be there. He's a police officer. He's protecting us. Well, maybe he is, maybe he isn't. So that's where we're at with it.
But you're working on this situation and?
Yeah.
The best you can do?
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I've talked to Laura about her going out before she was all open. Her hour to any day and just. And then we'll give him more specific projects. Eventually, I'm going to have to talk to her for a council. Doing something else. It was working fine the other way. Laura was out in the city, but pretty much no time today.
Right, go out once a Tuesday in the morning and once a Sunday every day. So if you're out there on a consistent basis, you pay attention to more of what's going on. You have to physically be there to see.
He isn't doing any administration at all. Because the sheriff won't do that. They told us that. They won't do any of the administration. So really Laura's doing, you know, any violations that are mailed out. Any cohering, stuff like that.
How many hours does he contract in four in the contract with the sheriff's office?
Well, I could shrink his hours. It's whatever I say to the sheriff.
So that reduces the amount that they get paid? That reduces the amount that they get paid? Isn't that part of an annual contract with them?
No, this is a separate contract for code enforcement. Yeah, he gets paid the same salary as a deputy for the city, part-time. But we pay the same hourly wage, which was 47.88.
Were you making that much?
Heck, no.
We pay 47.88 to the sheriff's office for that service, per hour. So it's costing us, I think last year it cost us about 30,000-ish. And we're going to, part of that money that's left over, the council is very interested in the supplemental patrols, where they put state operations out there on certain holidays. So that's what we're going to do, the money that's left over.
Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought I read in the code that there are some times that it has to be enforcement officer, a law enforcement officer, because there's warrants involved?
Code enforcement officer, you're probably talking about love court. Okay. That's what I call it. Well, I think the sheriff knows that too. It's called local ordinance violation. Where you can give them a citation. This is an example. We gave somebody a citation because they wouldn't move this derelict car. And they have to go to court and fight it if they want to fight it. But the fight is, I don't know, 100, 160, something like that. She knows better than I do about that stuff. Those things. It's much easier for a deputy to give them because they're, it's electronic. For us to give them, we have to type it up and mail it to them. And then we have to go to the court to get a date, and they go to the judge. And for the most part, it may rectify some things. It doesn't rectify everything, but I'd rather do that first than have to have a code enforcement. If you can solve the problem. You know, if you can't get it with a courtesy notice and then a notice of violation, then the, what I call love court citation. Then you've got to take it to court. But those are simpler steps than taking it to a hearing. Because there's a lot of things you have to do specifically for code enforcement.
The contract with the sheriff's office used to have wording that every deputy who patrolled the city was supposed to be on the lookout for code violations. Is that wording still in the contract?
Yeah.
Do they still do it?
Some of them pick up things like signs, you know. Because our code says you can only have, like a Realtor can only have a sign on the old art or wanting at the house for an open house. So some of them do that. Or, you know, they'll put signs here on Causeway that they advertise itself. They'll pick stuff up like that. Or if they get somebody working on Sunday, they'll use a hotel. So that's about the limit of what they do. But that, it says that in the contract. And then, you know, they'll. Our problem is, we've kind of, I guess, a little bit soiled. We had a deputy Scott.
Who else got one?
Okay. And he was very diligent about doing stuff like that. Very proactive, very much entwined with the residents and stuff like that. Well, probably Scott's the last one we've had for any very lengthy time since he left. And that's been what, two years? So what we've had is rotational deputies. And, you know, they'll come. For whatever reason, they decide, I don't like this place for various reasons. Things that happen. They don't want to be hassled. So they say, they bid to be. Like right now, all four of our deputies are running. They don't have anybody that was here last, the last. They have an opportunity to move every six months. And we had, well, Lydia was here for a year. She basically had issues. She'd had enough, it's time to go. Ernest, is he here here? Yeah. He moved on to try to get a little more money in the night shift. We had Derek for a year. He kind of got mixed up a little bit in all the hobbies that's been going on over the last couple of years. And said, you know, I don't do this. And he was a good deputy. So, you know, that's part of the problem. You lose good deputies because they don't want to get involved in the politics, I guess, a little bit.
Can you do much about that?
No.
Well, just, I mean, I was going to say it. I know that during COVID, there were a lot of calls made, particularly to our neighborhood, from elderly people, where the sheriff showed up repeatedly, including this deputy Daughtry. I mean, it was a daily event almost that they were being called out. So I don't know, I know you said he's been here a year, but how much did the COVID? I mean, that was just on my street. I don't know what was happening.
Well, really, and that's a discussion I've had with him. You're not here for the police calls. You're here for code enforcement. But that is the struggle, and that's because it's a police officer. You know, I guess if they, here on the radio, there's a call, and then they'll chime in and say, I'll be back. Well, that's not what you're really here for, the city, for.
So he only comes when he's working here?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. He's not, he isn't coming for, other than his days at work. No, he's not. Like if there's a call. If there was a call Monday, Danny wouldn't went to it because he wasn't here.
I got you.
But it's kind of a little, that's part of what I consider a little bit of a problem. He's trying to be the code enforcement officer, but he's intertwining and it's creating some issues.
Well, what's the ethics of that? I mean, I know.
Well, he's the sheriff, that's.
Yeah. You see, you kind of have to respond, don't you?
Well.
Well, we're getting into an area.
I don't know if that's true or not true. I have no idea, but.
I mean, if somebody's burglar alarm is going off and you're here.
Yeah, but he isn't hired, he's hired for code enforcement. He isn't hired to be the deputy. He's hired to be code enforcement. And there's a little bit of struggle with that separation.
I can see how that could happen.
We do, we do have a full-time deputy that's supposed to be here.
Right.
You know, 24.
Really?
Yes.
Who is that?
Well, not, not a person. But we pay for 24-hour coverage from the sheriff's department. And there should be a deputy assigned.
Yeah, like the last daytime deputies, that was Lydia, Lydia.
I met her several times too.
And then Ernest, he was the daytime deputy. Deputy Maltonato was the nighttime deputy. And then we had a guy, but he had to go out on family medical leave. Oliver. I don't remember, but. So, you know, those are deputies that are assigned to us. Like right now, our deputy is, on today's shift, is Joe. And on the other shift, days, her name is Ally, it's a lady. And then at night, there's two other deputies. Chris Mall and a lot of others. But they, they're assigned to us.
We're getting out of the code enforcement situation. Rudy, you want to continue on your situation?
Yeah. We were discussing Dan's response to my questions. And I think we may have gotten a copy of his letter that he sent back. And in there, he was referencing over blocking of drainage through these rubber mats being placed in gutters and curbs. Rubber curb ramps, he calls them, placed in drive, at the end of the driveways. And he says, there's nothing specifically in the code that prohibits such a device and that we should add something. My question was to Laura, do you agree with that? And she said you needed to address that.
Yeah, I agree with him because that's blocking the drainage. And we've had a few of these throughout the city. And there's a couple of people that want to argue about it. There are these rubber things that I guess they don't want their car to drag.
Yeah.
And the code for the drainage, and I can't remember what section that's in, but. What it says.
Twenty-two, thirty-three.
Huh?
Twenty-two, thirty-three.
Okay, what it says is something to the effect that debris. So it isn't clear. So, you know, that's something that, that's something that a housekeeping thing we need to add to say, you know, because it says like trash or something. So we had the engineer look at it. You know, he put something out. But then when the attorney looked at it, he said that our code wasn't clear enough to enforce it because it just talks about debris and the person who has one, I don't get what's due, it's all. He made the comment, well, this is a debris. So you can't enforce this mentality, you know? Now, other people, they took them away. But this one individual said, no, you can't enforce it. And then when I went to the attorney, he said, well, your code doesn't say specifically. It's kind of like, which we'll get to later in light 94. But there are things in there that talks about elevations and things like that. What you can have, you can't have a habitable space on top of the roof. The definition for habitable is two different definitions. So that's, that's why we need to do something with this. But this is a quick fix. And what I'll do, I'll come up with something and just bring it to you.
Okay. So you're going to bring us the language, we'll recommend that you go in.
Yeah.
Okay. You got that, Patty? All right, I think, anyone else have a comment on Darty's email? Okay, we'll move on to Susan Moore's response to my questions. And I would note that she generally says the, that her, from her end of it, she thinks it's an efficient process with the right teeth in it. The only thing she had mentioned with regard to code was in point two, that she says, one suggestion that I have, and I mentioned to Laura and Lynn last week, is to send out courtesy notices for violations. Start right off with a violation notice with a reasonable time to correct. So essentially, she's wanting to eliminate courtesy notices and go right to a notice if you've got to make the correction and if you don't know where it's going from three steps to two steps in the enforcement. What are your thoughts on that?
I'd much rather do the courtesy notice. Because I don't think we want to be Nazi police. I think what we want to do is just try to get compliance. And how this kind of came up was with rental registration. We had some code hearings. And one of them, we had to cancel and redo the notice to him because she didn't feel that we gave them a notice first and then a violation, even though they were late. We had sent them a letter. What we do with that is we mail a notice and an invoice in August, late August, early September. Then it becomes late 31 October. Well, in November, then Laura sends out the second notice. Well, her interpretation, our interpretation is, we've already given them a second notice. So why do we have to give them another notice before you can take them to code enforcement? So what we're going to do with the, in the future with the second notice is send them a violation with that notice. So that we don't come into that problem. But I still believe you need to give people courtesy notice. I mean, if they fix it, that's really the goal, is to fix, not to.
That's acceptable.
Yeah.
Okay. So on that, where you're going to, in that particular situation, send them the first, and then on the second, you're going to actually?
We'll send them a second invoice, and it's late. And we'll send them a violation at that time.
Okay. That's great because you know it, you're going to do it. But in the future, that needs, I think that needs to be in something. So that we know that it's policy and procedure rather than it's just part of your administration. But if you move on, it gets lost. What can we do to prevent that getting lost? And then?
I think we do that, they go to that. Administrative policy, I'll just update it and then it's not.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Go to the motion.
Then she's got, it's almost a housekeeping thing in point four, that I don't see a section 226 anywhere.
I don't either. I don't either. One that came up, I was looking, and I didn't see it.
So what do we need to do?
It's probably just a housekeeping thing to get clean something out.
All right. Patty, do you want to note that as a housekeeping for point four? Anyone else have any comments on Susan's response?
She's been around for a while, huh? Number seven?
Yeah.
Since Flight Alpha nine was landed.
Yeah.
For over fifteen years.
Okay, Rudy, you want to comment on any of the other parts of this section?
Ten?
Ten.
Yes.
Before we go around to ten?
We're going to ten. Finish the two letters, moving to ten. Most of what I've got here are actually questions for clarification to Lynn. And starting off in section ten point one, Regulation of Builders, and it defines a builder as any person who holds a certificate of competency. Then it goes on to say that such terms shall not include a private homeowner in District One or Two who elects to undertake or manage such work. Clarifying, well, two things I have a question about. One is clarify what homeowners can or cannot do or manage.
Well, in the condos, they can't do anything.
Right.
It has to be a contractor.
Right.
In residential, you can act as the homeowner contractor. All this is basically saying that they, in essence, don't have to have that license to do that work.
A resident doesn't have to have a license to do work that's normally required for a contractor to have the license.
Right.
Including... I think I get on to that in the next section.
So in essence, how they look at it is, they... The Pinellas County Building Department looks at it as a residence, which is a single-family home, you're the homeowner, but in a condo, you're one of many homeowners. So that's why they're saying they require a contract. And actually, this just happened to us, what... Where an owner of a condo is trying to renovate their condo themselves and doing the things that they think they're... They got to talk without a permit, okay? And then they tried to get a permit themselves. Well, it turns out, because you're part of the condo, you can't get a permit.
Yeah, you're not licensed. You don't have a license.
You're not licensed to do that work.
So in essence, I can do electrical, plumbing, whatever I'm going to do?
You still have to get a permit, technically. The only things that are exceptions are painting and tile work and carpeting. Technically...
And, all right, I can't hang a new ceiling fan. I can't do a new light fixture?
Well, the way our code reads, technically, you probably can. But I don't think you're going to have to go... I don't think the county is going to make you get a permit to hang a light fixture.
I don't think we want to stretch that far.
No.
Yeah, and I don't think we're going to. But just kind of fair warning, I think I have heard that. You do some electrical work, and that work causes a fire, essentially.
Right.
And that's discovered in the investigation of the cause of fire. Your insurance company can then not pay for the damages because you didn't have a contractor certified.
Well...
That's another view.
It's mainly because you didn't get a permit.
Right.
That's what the issue is. They can... If you go, like, onto the property appraiser, and they're getting better at it, but you'll see a list. Your permits are going to be listed. And so, you know, they kind of know. And when they come to... Let's say you sold your house. Well, they're going to look at that permit list to see if there's any spaces, like, if you added on to your house. And you didn't get a permit for it, well, it's not going to show up. So it's unpermitted issues. And that's really because of the FEMA regulations that are out there with the flood insurance and things of that nature, the requirement so people can't do substantial work to their house without a permit. That's what the reasoning behind it is.
Okay. Just to note this, in ten point two, where it talks about construction work going on within the city shall be prohibited between the hours of six p.m. and seven a.m., I don't have any problem interpreting what that is on the clock. Essentially, at night, after six o'clock, until in the morning at seven, you can't have contractors, you know, working in those hours. I was told by Officer Scott one time that that was nebulous, and he wasn't going to enforce it. He's gone, no problem, just pointing something out.
Well, we've been enforcing that. When we catch someone, we are enforcing that.
No, this was that one particular individual.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and then on another time, same individual. I had the guy, and I called you, where a contractor with a large vacuum for cleaning carpets pulled up on Memorial Day, listed holiday, and was cleaning for hours the carpets in a home that was unoccupied at the moment. Complained he wouldn't enforce it because he said, "That's nebulous."
I don't know why. I remember that. I called him and said, "Hey..."
Only you'd remember that.
No.
Only you'd remember that.
I do remember that.
Okay. Okay.
Going on, I got my gripe up. Did you have something?
Well, we were on this one. The one thing...
Wait a minute, we're going to get to...
What?
Individual.
No, did you have a question?
We're not going to do a topic at a time, huh?
I can't understand you anyway.
So we're not going to try to cover each point at a time, just do each one of our comments separately?
Go ahead, if you want to comment on Rudy's comment.
Just on that one area where it says something about immediate family. I do recall we had probably one time somebody was out there working on these days or after hours, saying, "Oh, I'm a cousin. Yeah, I'm part of the family. I'm a cousin." Did we ever get a resolve on that one?
No, because it's very hard to...
Carry birth certificates.
How are you going to prove that they're not?
But a cousin shouldn't be immediate family.
No, it isn't. It isn't. But unfortunately, that's very hard to enforce. Our best enforcement is if they bring a commercial truck, and you say, "No, you can't be here."
Yeah.
Like the carpeting.
Right.
You know, they bring a commercial truck, "No, you need to leave." And I know that's happened, but it's very hard to control.
I know the public ethics laws that I sat through, like, seven times, they have very strict definitions on immediate family. You know, in-law, 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 not cousins, not grandparents.
Well, our... Even our personal policy has that. You know, it says what an immediate family...
How the hell are you going to enforce that kind of situation?
Right, because there will be... You could... You know, if they said they were cousins, I guess you could probably tell them, "No, that don't work." But it can still be very hard to enforce.
I respect your situation. I worked for the juvenile court for two long, and everybody was related. Believe me. It's hard to tell the difference. Okay, Rudy?
I had a hard time understanding in section ten-three, C, interpretation, and then it's sub-one, compliance. To me, they seem like conflicting statements. Am I just reading that wrong, or... I mean, one says, "Nothing in this section shall pursue the conflict or supersede the authority of the state in regard to all these locations, control lines, waiver variance." And then it goes down in section one, it says, "Compliance of provisions of this chapter shall be independent of any action or authority of the state pursuant, and no action by the state shall relieve any person from compliance." One says you can't deviate, and the other one says the state... You can't... You have to comply with the state statute. But then the next one says, "No action of the state shall relieve any person from compliance with the requirement of the chapter."
Lynn, have you any trouble with this section at all? Has this come up before?
We're talking about ten A and C?
Ten-three, C, interpretation, and one, point one below that, sub-one, compliance. And I thought they were conflicting statements. One says the state has full authority, and then it says the state can take no action to relieve any person from compliance with the requirements of the chapter. You want to just get back to me on that? I don't want to waste time with a...
Coastal construction line, that's set by the state.
Yeah.
But there is some, I will say, there's some... How do I say it? Mixture on that because Pinellas County is a good example. Coastal construction line is the building, okay? The county, you can own property beyond that coastal construction line. You just can't build them, okay? So there's some conflict with how the county's interpreting who owns what. And I'll talk more about Beller Shore. If you look at the property line of Beller Shore, as it goes north, it comes closer and closer to the seawall. Well, the coastal construction line is mainly right at the seawall all the way down to the beach, where the county has said that they own the property beyond the coastal construction line, up to Seventeenth Street. Then it's pretty much the seawall. None of the condos own any of the beach, for the most part.
Has there been a big situation with your city?
It's become a bigger situation because of this umbrella thing with Beller Shore. Who owns what? What you can control.
Who owns the beach? Who puts up an umbrella?
Yeah.
I understand. Now, we can't solve that here.
So the state says one thing, the county says something else. I think there's a misinterpretation of what the coastal construction line is and what it's for. It's mainly to tell you you can't build beyond it. You know, it has nothing to do with who owns what. It just says you can't build beyond that.
Okay, well, it's just confusing to me, but it's state law, so not an outburst.
Absolutely.
Ten-three, permit's an exception, and I go back to what I said before. If you're doing a ceiling fan or a light fixture, it seems to me here that they're telling you you've got to have a contractor prior to permit. So just... Ten thirty-two, B, four. If it does, if it requires more than a common wall plug, meaning ceiling fan, wired-in ceiling fan, or a new light fixture, it still to me that you've got to have a permit. Much. Going on, I'm not going to stick, put any more time in that. Ten thirty-five, sanitary facilities. And I've seen this numerous times in front yards. They come along, and they set up a porta potty right in the front yard, right next to the street. All day long, you got, one, it's an eyesore. And two, you got guys coming in and out of it, and sometimes they got their clothes on, sometimes they don't. It seems to me that if they're going to put a portable sanitary facility in the front yard, that they should have some kind of portable fence in front of it. It should be behind something so you can't see it. Some kind of portable fence they take down when they take the porta potty down. Just my thought.
Well, that could be added. It does say inconspicuous location, but the reason they're put along the road is so they service them. That's...
Service.
Yeah, because they can't, you know, they aren't going to drive back into a lot, not service.
So could the wording be, you know, shielded or otherwise not visible from the road?
Yeah, but you got to look at the name thing. I'll go with...
Yeah, but it's a temporary thing. It's not permanent.
So the fence to hide it should be temporary as well.
It's also an attractive nuisance.
Like the interior.
It's also an attractive nuisance.
Maybe you could put, just say, inconspicuous, shielded location. That's all you need to connect to it. So they would have to put a fence around it.
Inconspicuous or shielded. Inconspicuous or shielded location.
Yeah.
It's either inconspicuous or it's got a fence in front of it.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah, okay.
That should solve that.
It's like those black things in construction people put around the outside.
Silk fence.
They're very ineffective.
All right, and going on to ten thirty-six, D, "Provide a dumpster of sufficient size with a cover." Never seen a cover on a dumpster.
That was changed in the last code, that they're required of a cover on.
Okay, so that's new. And then, "Provide receptacles with lids," and B, "Provide receptacles with lids for disposal of food scraps, bottles, and cans," and I see those blowing around the yard. I don't think I've ever seen a receptacle like that. They just throw it over in the dumpster, and then the wind blows it out of the dumpster, the bags and paper and what have you. To me, that's an enforcement issue that needs to be... Just, I mean, it's hardly written there. It just needs to be enforced. Also, in ten thirty-eight, in the section two and three, I'll say both of those, where it talks about no sediment or discharge into the stormwater system. There are primarily two offenses there, and that's concrete trucks who finish dumping their concrete, and then the guy wants to wash out his dump chute into the street.
Which they're not supposed to do.
Which they're not supposed to do.
But you got to catch it. That's it.
Well, my thought was, in their way, we can require a contractor to say, "If you are having concrete poured on the site on a particular day, you got to let the city know so they can come by and inspect after, make sure there was nothing dumped."
Yeah, I guess...
But you know what? When they wash it down, it just goes down the sewer. You'd have to pull a sewer tap and look down in there to see if, you know, it's... To me, it's a, with our situation, the stormwater drainage...
We would have to add something to it.
Yeah, we need to be as protective as we can about those situations. One, concrete washout. And the other one is now that everybody's putting in paper driveways, and they come and bring the base material, and they dump the base material, they can't typically put it in the yard or whatever, although you put a cart down. A lot of them want to dump it in the street real fast and then go, you know, put the base down from there. To me, it should be an ordinance that they have to leave it in a trailer. If it's going to be left on the street, it has to be left in the trailer until it's actually applied in the driveway.
We'll have to look further because I think there is something that says you can't...
Yeah, there is. They're there again. It's enforcement.
Right.
How are we going to improve enforcement?
Well, this stuff... Right. It's in five. What, B?
Five.
Yeah, five. Right, exactly. So what we need maybe is...
A little more policing in the construction site, if that's all.
Maybe something that says.
Housework.
Maybe you just could put that in the permit application instead of, because it's here, but they would have to notify us. It's like a right-of-way permit. When they start work, they're supposed to notify us.
Right. So, what you were saying, Lynn, is that when they come to get a right-of-way permit or something, that they're notified at that point? That this is in the code and a strict compliance?
Yeah, they're supposed to.
At the time of permitting or something?
Yeah, if we put something in the, you know, just another line in the permit application that says that you need to contact us. Like, when they do a right-of-way permit, there's a stipulation there that says you've got to call this, the city number and notify us that you're starting work in there.
Yeah, okay. Add it. Can you make that notation? It's in the code. If we're not getting good enforcement, then that's a good resolution, is putting it in the application permit, noting that, so the contractor is aware of it. I need another explanation from Lynn on Section 10-4, building permits issued on the basis of an affidavit. What is that about? Whose affidavit? And what does it provide, have to provide?
Where, where are you saying 10?
10-40. Building permits issued on the basis of an affidavit. For building permits.
Yeah, what they do, there's a, uh, in our application form, there is an affidavit that they sign that states they understand XXXX, you know, before we approve it.
Okay, but that doesn't extend through flood load and flood-resistant construction requirements?
Instead of scattering the requirements of the Florida building code, whatever that is, so.
Yeah.
That's covered.
All right. I just need another explanation.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. The next one is way back in Section, uh, 10-81. Just thought in Section 3 and 4 that you needed to add the word time share. Operator of every motel, hotel, time share, or other time share log, adding the word time share there. After motel, and in Section 4, uh, the same, they use the same term, hotel, motel, or other timesets, just add time share in there. And then, uh, going on to 10-83, where it talks about inspections and weight of entry in Section E, case of emergency or imminent threat to help state. If you were there affected party is believed to exist, limitations set out in this section will not apply. So, what happens if an emergency inspection is obvious, an entry is denied?
You're talking about where now?
10-83, Section E, where imminent threat or affected party is believed to exist, limitations set out in this will not apply. So, it says, you know, essentially you don't have to let them know you're coming or something.
Right.
Well, who has the authority to make entry for an inspection? Our code enforcement person? Has to be a police officer? Okay.
This says the city manager through the city attorney can procure a court order.
Can do what?
Procure a court order for entry.
No, I'm talking about case of emergency or imminent threat to help, or something's going on.
Laura just said, Laura just indicated the code enforcement.
Then you call the deputy?
Right.
And the deputy has to.
Deputy.
Okay.
It would have to be a deputy.
Yeah, sure. Law enforcement.
Yeah, that's kind of like, uh, maybe a situation like their.
The building's on fire, the fire department.
Well, not necessarily that, but we have, we, we have people in the city that we've had to go there because they're not taking care of themselves. And a neighbor's called, and we sent the sheriff, and they have a unit that actually does that with them. And sometimes they make or act them for two or three days and take them to a hospital, and they have, have to be released back. You know, uh, other instances where they have a, they need to get a, someone to manage their affairs. You know, we have an individual in the city that they've got a person that manages their affairs because they can't take care of the property themselves, or themselves really. So, they're the person that may do something like make sure their swimming pool is chlorinated, don't turn green, make sure their yard is cut. Things like that. But they do have the right to enter the premises.
Okay. That's all I have for Tim?
Thank you. Randy, now we can, Brutus Perry. She submitted, uh, looking to follow your critique. Angela.
Okay.
May proceed.
So, 10-32, I, I mean, since we're doing this, and it said wallpaper, I wondered, should we add on B, number one, drywall repair? Or do we need to get that specific? I mean, there.
Have you hit drop on the wet man?
There is a, in the building code, if it's over 100 square feet of drywall, you have to get forward.
Okay. I wouldn't even know how much 100 square feet of drywall. What is that?
Is that something we haven't read yet, gotten to yet?
Well, that's in the Florida building code.
Oh.
That says you, and it's funny you bring that up because that just happened with the, with the condo. And, and they admitted, oh, we're going to put drywall over our ceiling to hide the top part and put new drywall on. Well, it was 100 square foot is basically three sheets of drywall.
It takes you to scrape off the top part.
Well, these people, this was the people that wanted to get the permit. It was an issue, and they were gutting the place. You know, they said, oh, well, it's just painting. And well, no, it isn't. You put in, I mean, we had a picture of it. It's the whole ceiling is a little clogged. And the Florida building code says it's a 100 square foot or more, you've got to have a permit because there are screw attachments and things of that nature. So, I think if you put something like that in there, you would be open to the possibility of a can of worms.
Yeah. Unless you specify less than 100 feet or?
Yeah, it, I, I mean.
Urban system, the Florida building code, or?
Yeah, you could put something like that in there, but I, I really think.
Has it gotten out of hand, Lynn?
No, no, I don't think you've had any.
I just wondered, you know, since you have wallpaper in there, should we put drywall repair? A lot of times when you scrape off wallpaper, you're fixing your drywall.
No, 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 and I understand that, but I guess you could say put in drywall repair.
Of less than 100 square feet.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so people aren't scared to death, did?
Well, they aren't scared. They'll do it anyway.
Y'all are scaring me, let me tell you right now. It's like, no. Okay, so the next one was number four. I just, well, again, the question is, should we add? It, it says electrical connection. A lot of appliances require gas connections, so should we add?
We probably should just say unless electrical or gas connection.
Yeah.
That'll simplify it.
While you're doing it.
Right.
I mean, while you're updating it. And then on 10-38A, where it talks about a fee. It says that the city council can change that fee, and since we're talking about increasing fees, should that be done now?
This is mainly a silk fence fee.
All right.
When we have problems with people that, if we have to go back to them, we don't assess it when it's like the second time, third time. It's when it's the fourth or fifth time. We tell them, there's a $100 fee to re-inspect this because they keep doing it. And for the most part, it's only one person we've ever had to collect a permit because we have to keep telling them.
If you have to keep telling, do you have a red tackle?
Yeah, that's what we do. We, you know, pay your fee, you're shut down until.
Okay, Angela?
Okay, so, uh, 10-74-7, it was just, you know, I was looking, they already have language in here about docks and seawalls, piers and moors should be maintained in a good state of repair.
That's another section.
Right.
Well, what you're saying is we should add a good state of repair pursuant to whatever.
Whatever we come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that covers it right there.
Pursuant to Chapter 30.
That's approved.
And then, um, 10-77, so when you're talking about, this is where I didn't, I wondered if we should include the concern about the palm trees that were mentioned? Is, there was an issue with some sort of palm, and I thought you said Washingtonian?
Washington, yeah, Washington palm.
So, is this a good place? And I wasn't sure what the issue was with the Washington palm.
Well, they're not permitted technically.
Because?
Well, it, it's in the code that way.
I was at that council meeting.
That's Chapter 22, right?
Yeah.
I was at that council meeting.
Yeah.
The man who was commissioner, it commissioned.
And we did change, we probably, in this section, we probably need to add invasive species just as an add. And the reason I say that, in the last code review, we, we called Brazilian pepper because technically it's called the grass. It's not a tree. And so, that falls in the seven-inch height requirement of grass. So, and we've told a few people that they've had to cut them down. Issues being like mainly on vacant lots. And when we went, since we changed that code, it was two years ago, right? Two years ago, we've been able to get these vacant lots to remove that Brazilian pepper. Because they don't want to cut it to seven inches. They want to just get rid of it because you, you, you're cutting a stump to seven inches. And guess what? Tomorrow, it's going to be eight inches or nine inches because the, that pops back up. So, fortunately, we've had good luck with, with that. So, that, that probably needs to be added in here, area free of dead, dying trees, invasive species, et cetera.
Should, should there also make, maybe be a reference to Chapter 22 for environment? Because all of this is covered in Chapter 22.
Right. But I think it's good to add, as an additional, because of the invasive species.
Recommend it? Okay. Okay. Notice of violations?
Oh, um, so I guess my question on 10-88, notice of violations, method of service, number one was hand delivery by sheriff or other law enforcement officers. Is the sheriff providing that notice, or didn't you say we don't have a sheriff anymore?
No, we don't have.
Okay.
But the sheriff is who we have, law enforcement or code, code inspector, or anyone could. That, that's bas- basically what I was talking about, courtesy notices. Like, right now, Danny will, I'll give a courtesy notice to Johnny because he's, maybe the first time. He's got his car parked on the grass. Instead of giving him a citation, you tell him, don't park your car on the grass.
So, they're just not Bel Air Beach Police Department anymore?
No.
Okay.
No. It's the sheriff.
And the, and the, number two, about leaving the notice with somebody who's over 15 years of age? And, I mean, how would you know that? Are they going to ask? Yeah?
This is from, um, state, the Florida state statute.
Okay.
And that's how it's read there, and they do know that it was left up to the discretion of whatever particular officer or person is trying to make that notice to determine how to best, and they do know that it's, or those giving those. But it's the statute. It's written in there as a, we have it in ours.
Yeah, we have a, a neighbor who has a son with Asperger's, and he would, he's older than 15, but if you handed that to him, they'd never see it.
That's why they leave it sort of to the discretion of the individual people who's there.
Yeah.
Because like I said, 15-year-old might not be.
Right. Okay, Section 10-92, administration. I just had a question about reasonable cost of repairs. How often does that happen? And are these monies that was included in that discretionary fund that you asked to increase? Like, if you, if there's an emergency and you have to fix something?
That would fall under an abatement. That's what we cut. And we have the, you know, if we've noticed a violation, and we probably use the, the abatements more for things like grass or overgrown stuff, because I can send the public works staff to cut the grass. Well, what that costs them is their time, their hourly wage, the cost of utilizing the equipment. We have a, a fee schedule set up for that. Then on top of that, there's an administrative fee of $150. So, it may cost, uh, $75 in labor, we'll say. But the $150 administration fee is put on top of that. So, if somebody doesn't cut their grass, it's going to cost them $225 if the city has to do it or has to hire someone, or something. It's the same situation here. If we needed to do repairs to make sure it was public health, safety, and welfare, then whatever that cost of that repair, we would charge that. Then we would charge an administrative fee for doing it.
So, if it was like a seawall?
We, we would, we wouldn't do that. That would be a contract.
That's what.
What, what I'm more concerned about with seawalls is we need to make the homeowner, get someone to look at it.
Sure.
Ballroom or something.
Yeah, that was my, uh, next question is if it is a big job, do you get bids on that?
We have to get a contractor. We don't have the staff.
Okay.
Nick, thank you very much. Right now, we'll go to Brenda.
Actually, the two questions that I have have been addressed.
They've been addressed. Thank you very much. Next case, Wanda.
Okay, that's, hey, you have my list. We'll start a back at 10:20. I had the question of should we define immediate family, and I think we said that that's really.
It's up in the air.
Well, I mean, we could put it as a definition in the, you know, the heading, under definition.
You'll never be able to because the law changes every day.
But you'll, the problem is, okay, if the definition is brother, son, blah, blah, blah.
Related by half-mothers.
How are you going to, it would be very hard to choose otherwise.
Yes, it is.
And we don't really, I don't think we've ever really had much problem with that that I know of, unless you know something.
Well, there was the one on Harrison. The, the, the family was, the, the guy who's trying to do a lot of the work himself, and they were working at all hours of the day, every day, every holiday, every weekend. And when you went to talk to him, I'm a cousin. I'm a cousin-in-law. I, I'm part of the family. I'm okay.
I'm her brother.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I don't think it's bad to put it. Yeah, well, I, I mean, I don't think it's bad to put the definition in there of what immediate family is.
All you have to do is take a list, take a look at the list in probate court of who has a right to file for, on a will.
Well, but, but what I'm saying is the immediate family.
I'm not saying we should incorporate it, I'm saying it's really involved.
Well, you can create a definition of immediate family, which we already have that definition in other things in the city. So if we use that, then.
So you have precedence for the definition?
Right.
Continue, please.
And the second point was whether or not, is, how, how many complaints do you get on this, on this topic of the work being done outside of hours or on holidays? Do you really have to wait for somebody to complain or is there proactively?
Well, the, the, we do bring the code enforcement in occasionally, it's not every weekend.
Good question.
I, I will say some weekends he catches someone, some weekends he doesn't. Because it's mainly Sunday. Or, you know, the deputies are aware that if it's after six o'clock, they should stop and tell them. Because the code enforcement guy is here at that time. Probably the majority is, if we give a complaint, then we'll monitor it and see if, you know, it's factual because, you know, I'll say something to the deputy or I'll have the code enforcement guy check it on the weekend.
I've called a non-emergency number to complain a few times in my residency here.
And did they?
They, they have a deputy go out and check on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so they're willing to, you know, that's, they're very willing. It's hard to, sometimes you don't really know what's going on. I mean, people do a lot of things that are, sort of have surprised me over the years, you know? They'll have a contractor come work at their house and tell them, drive your private truck, so it's, it's not, you don't know.
Not obvious.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on ten twenty-two, I just, after, including roof painting, comma, and wallpapering. Because you're not going to be wallpapering your roof. It's not square, that's all. No big deal. On ten thirty-four, incomplete construction. Have we ever had to raise anything?
Not that I am aware of.
You've threatened a couple.
We, we didn't, you remember the, you probably even remember that house over here by my house, Mrs. Perez?
Okay.
And, and she.
I remember that house.
You know, tried all kinds of angles to get, because it was, it, there was nothing inside it. After more, he moved out, sold it. She basically, finally, I don't know what I said to her, I said, what did I tell her?
You told her that you were going to change the code to require plumbing and electrical?
Oh, that's right. I, I told her I was, you know, we were probably going to change the code, that you had to have plumbing and electrical in operation in the house if it was going to stay there. And she didn't like that idea, so she tore it down.
Good, so she did it for you. Okay.
I, I think that was when we were, didn't we add that to the code? We did. And, and the reason we did that is because of a house like that. You know?
Luckily, we don't have a lot of those in the neighborhood.
You know, we have a house right now that is past its permit time and we had a co-hearing with them last Friday on Twenty-Fifth and Abyssus. There's a house, it's a big concrete monster.
Off cement.
Huh?
It's off cement.
Yeah, yeah, so the magistrate told him, she gave him a seven month extension to finish the house. If he doesn't finish it, it's a hundred day, a hundred dollar a day fine from last Friday. And he has thirty days to provide us with a list, a plan finished by August thirty-first. So he's got about three more weeks to send that to us or something. At some point, if he doesn't do that, then he's in violation for a quarter. So we'll see what happens with that house. Because it's been very slow. I mean, he asked for an extension and from the extension period, the only thing that got done to that house was they put some windows in it and they stuck with it. That's all they did, six months. So I'm not too optimistic that it's, it's going to end up like that house. Rudy, you remember that house on Harbor?
Harbor.
That we had to just fine to death. Finally, they realized that it was going to cost them a lot of money and they ended up paying like a third of their fine.
Part of that issue was the contractor himself not complying with what went down was what you've been wondering.
Right.
He was very deliberate.
So, you know, those, those are things that, you know, you hate to do it to somebody, but, I mean, we had to do it to a house on Harrison, the same thing. You got X amount of days to finish it, if you don't finish it, you're going to be paying this big fine.
Okay.
Okay. Ten seventy-one, general provisions, so mean one is this, diminished property value detract excessively from the appropriate appearance of the area. Is, I think that's a little subjective, maybe just refer to ten seventy-two for clarification? Or maybe even to chapter twenty-two for environment? I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, we have a lot of codes that cover things, but ten seventy-one's kind of vague.
We just want to make reference to ten seventy-two at the end of that section?
Yeah, either that or ten seventy-two or chapter twenty-two, whichever one I, or maybe both of them because they both cover, they both cover appearance and environment.
I reference from chapter twenty-two and ten seventy-two. Okay. Got that, Pat?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then on ten seventy-two, we have a thing called lighting influence. Has, has anything been decided for being a lighting influence?
We've given courtesy notices a few times, like, as an example, for painting, they did, the house needed painting, things like that. And in most cases, they've taken care of it, a couple cases they haven't. But there's a few houses in the city that we probably need to go back through and send them, first give them a courtesy notice, if we've done it before, then give them a violation. Try to get them to at least maintain the property or, you know, it was one of them that, that, it's an elderly lady, instead of cutting the weeds, they sprout.
So it's been a big problem.
It, 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 it can be.
It's taken care of. Okay.
And there's a couple of instances, like in the ten seventy-four, general standards, talking about gutters and downspouts, so it needs to be kept clear of debris and any good work. Someplace else talking about under basements or something, walk across bases should have less work. Are these just statements of principle or is there any ways to enforce them? Because you can't really see it usually.
You can't, it's just.
Unless with gutters, you happen to go by when it's raining and stuff's pouring out of it all over.
Right, flowing over the top of it.
Which chances are if it's raining that hard, we wouldn't be able to tell anyway? And then on ten seventy-four seven, on the dock seawall, clear of worry, perhaps this should, the thing is, that handbook is really good and very comprehensive. I have a question on that one and on, further on down. Can we make that handbook part of the official policy? Or when we get to chapter thirty, just incorporate the whole thing into chapter thirty? I think this needs to reference however we end up incorporating the handbook. Say, just in good repair, in this state of repair, I think needs to be clarified in reference to where the details are, wherever we put them.
I think we could reference the handbook as a, another document outside of the code instead of trying to put the whole handbook.
An addendum to the code or something.
Right, somehow.
That'll make, that'll make our review of thirty a little easier. And then when you get down to twelve is the one that I complained about. Garbage shall be placed in the garbage disposal facilities or stored with lecks.
Right.
It shouldn't have to require a neighbor to complain. Then you get to ten seventy-five, basic equipment and facilities, permanently fixed address numbers on the front of the buildings which shall be clearly visible from the street.
That's an issue of enforcement.
Yes.
You know, did we put that in that last brochure?
Yes.
That they needed.
Fire department comes by at times and they've said, put it on there.
Yeah, but there's, I can pick.
I'm just saying.
I, I, I can tell that you have a my pad.
Hundreds of houses without an address on them.
Why, sure.
You know?
They don't want to mess up the front of their house.
I mean.
We can do some note that it's not conspicuous in our.
Well, there's a lot of houses without a number on them. I mean, I know that. I guess, well, you know, and it does say that it's got to be here. And, you know, the fire district, I'm sure wants those numbers.
Absolutely. So does the, like, squad.
Police department.
That's a very important note to.
Yeah.
To, yeah.
Somehow to enforce.
Come on to this committee.
Yeah.
And on ten seventy-six, light and ventilation, again, is this just a statement of principle or is it enforceable? Like, like, like the gutters, you're really, it's hard, it's hard to.
Right.
It's hard to find. And ten seventy-seven, just maintenance and appearance standards. Again, a lot of that maintenance and appearance standards is covered under chapter twenty-two.
Right, and this is kind of what we were talking about earlier, about light. Some of this stuff, we, if we find something, we can actually use this section of code to reinforce your grasses. Because example, a good example would be streams that will not be maintained, you know, because there are some that aren't maintained.
Okay.
Okay, then we get to ten eighty-eight, notice of violations under C, method of service. Maybe we go back to what we said last time and add wording here about the photographic proof of delivery.
Yeah, we, right, just, or we just add.
State statute.
Huh?
State statute.
Maybe we ought to check and see if there is any references. I mean, we've done it automatically when it was posted because I want that record to be able to show the magistrate to say it was posted.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're giving a notice to a young person that you're not sure their age, having a photograph of who you gave it to, the fact that it was actually served, like a process server.
I don't know about taking pictures of people's children.
Unless you, you got to have permission.
Yes.
Take pictures of people's kids?
Then in ten, ten ninety, condemnation, all costs incurred by the city for serving or demolishing a business or structure shall be assessed against the property. Has that, has that ever been?
Never had one.
Never had one? In A.
Next case.
Again, ten ninety-two, city managers authorized to make unreasonable repairs. Again, I think we already talked about that under Angela's point. Division two, swimming pools. This whole section underwent extensive modification within the last five years. Are there any issues in here that we, this committee needs to be concerned about?
I don't think so, and we went through it two years ago.
For several months?
For several months and, you know, there was some discussion about the requirement that the deck of the pool can only be eighteen inches above the ground of the road. Well, my understanding why that was put in place is because we had some issues with people filling lots. And there's a good example on Gulf Boulevard where that one house is built up like this and then they just built their house and built their pool to the same level. Well, I think that's when the code was changed because of things like that. And recently, we just had another one come in with that concept. I don't know what's happened with that law, that the law on Howard, they, they came in and wanted to build the house and fill the lot so you could walk out of the first floor onto grass. They wanted to have their yard up at that level. And then I had another house on Third Street, same thing, so I, you know, we told them it's not within the code.
You mean up to the twelve foot level?
Huh?
The twelve foot level?
Yeah, well, let's say the, as an example, probably down on Howard, those are probably six or seven foot elevation already, so the BFEs maybe ten or eleven. So they wanted to fill the lot five foot. Now, what all that's going to do is you're not going to stop all that drainage. You're just dumping it on your neighbors. And that's what's happened with those houses. Even though they built a wall around it in the back, they built a short wall, stem wall around it, it still has drainage problems.
Seeped through.
Yeah, it's seeping. So I don't think we need to change any of that. A lot of people, you know, today, at times, you know, I know there's been pools built, there may be one up here, the next hole is down here. Well, a new house is built and that one's down here. So I think the eighteen inches above the ground of the road restricts that to some degree, to second to garage floor, things of that nature.
Isn't this all, isn't this all tied in with the permitting situation, et cetera?
Well, it's part of the code.
Sure.
That, you know, we evaluate the cycle length, so it is tied in with that permitting. But, you know, there's always someone that comes and says, well, I want to build my swimming pool up here. Well, we've got a standard that was set at some point in time and.
Well, that'd have to get a variance and a change and all that sort of stuff.
Well, that's the only option to get a variance.
Sure.
You know, you've got to, that'd be like saying, next door to Wanda, they tore the house down and decided, well, I'm going to build a mound here and then I'm going to build my house up line. Now, do you think the neighbors are going to say that's okay with them?
You can't look at my window.
When you go to the variance or the neighbors have some input and that's, you know, and who created the hardship? You created it, not somebody else. So I, I don't think that's something that's.
Don't wrong here.
No, it's, it's, I think we've already went through that.
One question I do have on that eighteen inches, when we're doing road repair, are we raising the crown of the road at all?
No, typically, all we're doing is building and put back an inch. Like right now, we're ready to mill, or we just build Bellevue, Estates Island, all those roads in there, we're just going to put back an inch. We're just going to put back anything.
30 and 54. We covered 30 and 54.
So that's a non-issue. Okay, that was all I had.
So we got that, what, 94?
No, we've got 30. We covered 54. We've got 30 and...
90.
94.
And that stupid marine thing.
JC, did you have anything?
I'm extremely...
What, you had anything on 10?
I didn't understand you.
I wanted to ask if you had any comments on section 10.
No, I... Listen. Some of the things that are covered, some of the suggestions were excellent and were duly noted by Patty and taken in by Laura and Lynn. And we'll put into one big bunch here at the end, Patty will. And I'm very proud of everybody getting involved like they did. We've had 100% attendance. This is something that's fantastic, as far as I'm concerned with any meeting during each time periods. I do not have anything to add except that I did read what... As I did and as I told you before, I taught business law at one time. But a lot of it is out of our control and controlled by the state code, by Florida code, by executive order, whatever. So we're doing the best we can with what we got. So far, so good. We have three sections left to cover. This is under unfinished. 30 and 94. And Lynn threw this seawall manual at us.
Yeah, that's basically would be part of 30.
That's part of 30.
Can't hear you.
That would be part of 30.
I know. I'm holding this in my hand, asking Laura and Lynn to supply this floor with just some specifics that you picked up that might have come out of council that they're concerned about. Because there's so much stuff here.
Well, I think if you read...
I did.
That and then kind of go through... We went through 30 a couple of years ago. Really, all we're trying to do is get some...
That's what we're looking for.
Stronger language about...
If the damn thing's going to fall down, let us know.
You need to get an engineer to look at it, kind of thing. That's really all we're... Because we did go through 30.
And I think another thing might be, I don't think it's covered so much to the seawall, but in the Madera Beach thing, I think they get into a little more detail on docks and dock maintenance. And I think that's been an issue that we've had in this city. But particularly after a storm, people tend to ignore the fact that their docks are destroyed or in the process of falling down. And I think that needs to be looked at a little more closely.
Yeah, it's mainly the docks and the seawalls that we need to focus on in 30. Not so much in the... It's mainly how do we come up with a way to enforce in some way, shape, someone to be able to tell them, "Hey, your seawall is... You've got a problem. You need to get an engineer to look at it." Because we're not the experts in seawalls. There are some, the things that the sections I gave you here, there's some things in there about docks that have to be beneficial, maybe to add to our code.
You let me know, but I'm not actually... Is there anything in this group under unfinished business that should come up?
I do have a question.
Okay.
When do we have to start looking at the comprehensive plan? Is that going to be...
I can't hear you.
Comprehensive plan.
That's... Why do you ask that? I just signed the contract with... I just signed the contract with the gavvy yesterday or with Ford and Mills and sent it back to them. So we'll get probably some kind of time schedule for the planner that's going to do it here shortly. But she just sent me the document. And they just wanted to... Yeah, she sent it to me in the evening. Sent it back to her. We mailed the originals this morning. So did the person who sold her. They're going to charge us $5,000 for that service up to, not to exceed. So if they don't use all the hours, then they're charged.
You're satisfied with that?
Yeah. And it's under...
Anything else under unfinished business? I can ask for citizens' comments. And there was a citizen that commented last time and it wasn't noted. I just wonder if there isn't nothing? Okay. Now, I have a question for Lynn on this meeting. Excuse you. Is that a virtual meeting coming up that you... What is it? Live meeting?
Right, we don't have any virtual right now.
Okay, so somebody from our group should be here to...
And all you need to do is just give them a synopsis of what you've done. You went through sections 2, 10, and 54, and you'll be making recommendations. That's basically all you can do.
Okay, it'll either be myself or one.
Okay. Okay.
So that's on the sixth?
No, that's the first.
Patty, is that the sixth?
First.
First, February 1.
The first.
Next Monday.
At 6:00 P.M.
Yeah, and your... Reports are right after the police presentation. So it's right at the beginning of the...
At the beginning?
Yeah.
The last time I was here to report, they tweeted till the end of the meeting.
It's at the beginning of the meeting. There's citizens' comments, the sheriff, and then the board reports.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate that.
Very short agenda.
I have to appreciate the involvement of the city helping us along with some of this interpretation. And if there's nothing further to do, I will call for an adjournment. Are those the paper?
Aye.
On closed? So moved.